I'd like to call the meeting order and thank everyone for their attendance. The first thing we'll be doing will be the city manager's briefing on mobile applications, which is pretty interesting stuff.
It's great stuff, and this is something, if council recalls, we talked about at our retreat, I think maybe it might be two years ago now, in terms of desire to really move in this direction and make some of our services much more accessible to the public. So ComIT and Dave Hansen have been working on this for a while, and we're here to walk you through that. Matt Arvey is the director of ComIT, and Matt will introduce the item.
Matt, we're glad to have you. We look forward to your presentation.
Thank you. We've moved off to the side from where the podium normally is because we're actually going to do a live demonstration today, so we're actually tethered into it.
Wonderful.
Good afternoon.
We hope we're doing a live demonstration today.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you for taking the time to discuss an exciting technology innovation. We are here to demonstrate two new mobile apps that will increase citizen access to city services and information, and it'll provide the citizens the capability to make service requests directly from their mobile devices 24 hours a day, seven days a week. As Jim just mentioned, with the support of the city council, city manager, and deputy city managers, we started this mobile application development initiative or program a little over a year ago, and we feel it really is another step forward in meeting the city's vision to provide excellent quality services and be responsive to community needs. It's also very reflective of the new vision of ComIT, which is to be customer-driven, collaborative, transparent, and transformational. Now, many of you may remember, there was a few key business drivers that allowed us to initiate this program. We were seeing a growing trend in mobile application utilization, and we were looking at statistical data that we gather on a daily basis as it relates to vbgov.com, our city websites. And we were seeing a year after year growing in the mobile devices that were accessing our city website. And we also felt this was a continuation of opening new doors for citizens to connect with their government. So we identified the key business drivers, but as we all know, it takes people to turn a vision into reality. So I'd like to introduce to you Chris Golding. He is here today to demonstrate the new applications. He is the team lead over the new program.
Chris, we're glad to have you here today.
Thank you, sir.
Chris has an associate's in applied science and network administration, and an associate's of science and business administration from Tidewater Community College. He also has a bachelor's of science in computer science and a master's of science in computer science from James Madison University. Chris has built an outstanding team of very energetic and passionate people, and I think when the demonstration is done, you'll agree that they are very good at what they do. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Chris, glad to have you.
Thank you, sir. So I appreciate y'all letting me get up here and show you what we've been working on. It's been really exciting for the past year, kind of us building the team and then starting to build our apps. And I think y'all will be really excited with what we have to show today. So what I wanted to go through is first, I'm going to give you kind of an overview of where mobile is right now, in both the city and also across the country. We'll kind of talk a little bit about how our mobile strategy fits in with the overall master technology plan, and then I'll give you a demo of both VB Connect and VB Works, which are two applications which we're releasing. So starting off with state of mobile. As Matt mentioned, mobile is gaining popularity with city services. So if you look at the trends over the past four years, back in 2011, we had 9% of our traffic on vbgov.com was coming from a mobile device, which is either a phone or a tablet. And that has steadily increased each year. Up until last year, we were at 38%. So that's a huge increase in traffic for devices that we weren't really providing content for, that was formatted for that device. So we want to make sure that we are now meeting the needs of those users and providing them the content that they want. So we know that there's mobile users. Mobile is a fairly generic term. So if we look at the overall mobile landscape, what do we need to support? Take a look at the U.S. market share of mobile devices. You can see that about 94% of devices are either iOS or Android. That's a huge chunk of the market. Here's a few smaller players. Microsoft has a small piece in this, BlackBerry, Symbian, and a few other groups.
It's your iPhone. It's your iPhone.
Yep. So we decided to only focus on the big two players. And so Android, or, so we're going to go ahead and continue to look at the other players in this market, and we'll make decisions based on, you know, as market share increases for those other groups. So how does this fit in with our overall strategy? Well, we wanted to go ahead and establish a distinguishable portal for Virginia Beach for all of our mobile apps and also our content. We want to enhance the citizen experience with government by providing access to services and information. And that kind of ties into another component of the master technology plan, which is Section B8, which is provide citizens with better access to services and information. And then, of course, we want to drive operational efficiencies. We want to transform business processes from beginning to end so that citizens can move away from doing manual processes, and also departments can move away from doing manual processes. We move everything, or as much as we can, to an automated computing-driven system. So how are we going to do this? Well, we're going to go ahead and provide mobile applications for both the citizens and also the workforce by kind of doing a combination of things. We're going to deliver apps that we build, and then we're also going to purchase applications. So the benefit here is that by buying applications that are just generic apps that, you know, that'll meet most of our requirements, we can save money there. And then for those apps that we have specific requirements that we need to meet, we can build it in-house. And then anything that we bring in, we want to make sure it integrates with our existing business systems, and that's part of that end-to-end business process transformation that I was talking about a minute ago. So the first app I wanted to hop into is VB Connect. So what VB Connect is, it's an application that provides citizens with a quick and easy way to access services and information. It also provides us with a central location for all of our mobile applications. Before I got into, before we kind of came up with this app, I was surprised, or, I was surprised by how many mobile apps we have. We have apps that we've built, apps that we've partnered with, and you'll get a view of that in a minute. And part of this is we're leveraging content from vbgov.com. So as stuff gets updated on our main website, it gets reflected in the mobile application, which makes it very nice for our users who are managing this content, so they're not having to manage it in multiple locations. And of course, this is the first app we've actually built ourselves. So we have a version of this app for both iOS and Android. As you can see, the interfaces are very similar, but we tried to make the applications feel like they're at home on the platform. So we moved a button here and there. We've changed the navigation a little bit, but it's designed to have a very consistent feel across both of them. So let me show you the application in action. So you'll be able to go to the App Store right now and actually download this app. You just open up the iOS App Store or Google Play, search VB Connect. On first launch, gives you a set of tiles that you can use. Up here at the top, this is the, this is our featured articles. So these are the same articles that you see on vbgov.com in the carousel. You see something that you're interested in, like Mr. Potato Head's exhibit at the aquarium. You can select that. Takes you out to the website. There we go. Lets you view the content in-app. You can share it out, send it to email message, however you want to share it out. Some of the other tiles we have here is down here at the bottom, we have a photo slider. These are pictures taken by our city photographer, uploaded to Flickr. It automatically updates, so as new pictures are taken, they'll show up here. And then kind of the big thing, I think, on this main screen is these two middle tiles, the mobile apps and hot topics tile. These tiles are things that we can configure whenever we want, meaning we set these up to be mobile apps and hot topics right now, but next week, let's say there's some big hot, there's a big thing we want to put on here. We can easily change that and have it go to a website, go to another part of the app. It's a very simple, two-second change, and automatically gets shown on people's devices. So let's hop into the mobile app section. As I mentioned, the city has a bunch of apps, specifically the libraries. They partnered with quite a few apps, and these are all things that you can download and install on your device. We have Parks and Rec who have the great mobile Park Finder app. We have the Visit Virginia Beach, which is a great, that's a web app itself. It really, looks really nice on phones. And then we have the apps that we've built or purchased, which are like VB Works there. So let's say, hey, I'm a citizen, I'm interested in, you know, finding out more information about the library, so I want to launch the VB PL To Go app. You can tap on that app. Takes you out to the App Store so it lets you download it. You can download it from here. If you have it already downloaded, you can open it right from here. If you're running one of our apps that we've actually integrated with, like VB Works, when you tap on it, it actually launches the app directly if it's installed on your device. So it's meant to be a very simple process to jump back and forth between our apps and VB Connect.
Is the next door on there?
That is not up here quite yet, but this list is what departments have requested us to add so far, but any other applications, you know, we're open to expanding the list. Let's hop into the menu. This is where we put everything that couldn't fit onto the home screen. We only have so much real estate. So this is where you'll find departments, AVZ directory, job listings, our news releases, a whole bunch of stuff. So let's say I'm a citizen, and I'm interested in getting a job with the city, because the city is a great place to work. Choose job listings. Goes out, pulls the latest jobs that you can apply for. See, you know, hey, I'm interested in being an EMS lifeguard. Select that position. Gives you a brief description on the job itself, and then you can apply for it right from here. So it makes it very easy for us to engage more with our citizens and provide them with the content in a fashion that they want. All right. There's a lot more in VB Connect, but it would take me quite a bit longer to kind of go through every feature. So we're going to go ahead and hop back over to the presentation and switch over to the next app, which is VB Works. Now VB Works is an application that allows citizens to either report non-emergency issues or request services from the city. So we've had a page on vbgov.com called Report a Problem. That particular page, this application kind of upgrades that page. So we took the old forms down that were there and replaced it with a new widget for VB Works. So this is available both on the web, and also we have mobile apps for iOS and Android. One of the things that we did with VB Works is this integrates with some of our existing work order management systems. Specifically, in Phase 1, which is what we're releasing now, it integrates with the Hanson Work Order Management System. What that means for the citizens, or for the workers, is that they can continue to use the same application that they've always used to manage work that comes in. They don't have to learn a new system. They don't have to enter stuff into one system and then enter it into another. It's all integrated into one place. And so what this actually allows citizens to do is, a citizen can report an issue. You know, they see a pothole. Take a picture of that pothole, send it through VB Works. It goes into the VB Works system, and then it gets sent into the Hanson Work Order Management System. The work crews, they immediately get that issue, and they can go ahead and start working that problem. Once the issue has been resolved, the work crew makes change to the issue in Hanson. It then pushes it out to the citizen, lets them know what's happened. So the citizen gets, can, the citizen can also ask questions throughout the process. You know, maybe we're taking too long to get something done. They can say, hey, guys, what's going on? Or maybe the work crew has some questions. Maybe they can't find this pothole. They can ask qualifying questions to the citizen. And so it creates a two-way communication between the citizen and the workers that who are actually out there doing the work for them. So that definitely increases the communication between citizen and the city. It also increases the visibility of what's being worked on. So everything that gets entered into VB Works is considered public. So you can say, you know, I want this pothole fixed, and then another citizen can be like, hey, I saw that same pothole. I'd like to follow that issue so that I can get updates on what's going on with that. Where's it being, you know, has it been fixed yet? Or I can add a comment saying, no, no, this guy said it's over here, it's actually over here. So it really makes it much more public as to what's going on and what we're working on. But right now, there are several departments who are using VB Works. Public Works has several of their divisions using VB Works, operations, building, maintenance, waste management. We also have Parks and Rec's Landscape Management Service using it, ECCS through VB 311, and then Code Enforcements, or Housing's Code Enforcement Group. These groups are in here right now. We're expecting that as we move forward with Phase 2 of VB Works, we'll increase the number of departments that are involved and also the issues that we have listed in the application. So right now, those issues, we have quite a few. You can request, as I mentioned, potholes to be repaired, traffic signs, traffic signals. You can request a bulky item pickup, yard waste. There's a whole bunch of stuff you can do. And as I said, we're expecting this to grow. So we have this other category in here. This is kind of a catch-all, or it doesn't fit into any of these other groups. So we're going to use that category to determine what other categories we need to add. You know, what other departments need to get involved and get stuff into VB Works. So here we have, for VB Works, we have a version for iOS, we have a version for Android. Now, this was an application we purchased. We bought it from a company called C Click Fix, and they allowed us to brand the application with our colors, our logo. We even have a separate app in the App Store that's just for Virginia Beach. So with that, we get their interface. So you have a specific Android interface, and you have a specific iOS interface. The functionality between the two is very, very similar, but it's a pretty cool thing. So let me go ahead and hop into VB Works, and let's create a service request. So within VB Works, on first launch, you get a tiled interface of everything that you can do. So you can report a problem, you can look at the issues that are out there. We also have these custom buttons down here at the bottom for calling 311, looking at city pictures, or looking at our YouTube channel. Say you want to report an issue. Okay, we can do a graffiti. So when you launch the app, you have a couple of things that you can choose from. So right off the bat, you notice that the location, it uses your device's GPS to determine where you're at.
GPS have to be enabled to use the site?
No. If it doesn't have, if you don't have GPS enabled, it uses cell towers to try to figure out where you're at, and if all else fails, you can always just type in your location.
Brother, I know people who don't enable them. Wow.
Yeah. There's many people who don't. So if, let's say you didn't enable GPS, you can always open up, click on the location, and then drag around and figure out, hey, my issue is actually like right here. So select that. As you can see, the location now updates. It does a reverse geolocation and determines where that address is, or what address is associated with that particular location on the map.
You're a pretty smart guy.
I try. There's my graffiti, all right.
I'll show you my paper.
But I like it. This is good.
This is spectacular, huh? Wow.
You can choose from the issue title. This is where you actually select your categories. Now, you see we have a bunch of graffiti categories, and that's because there are many departments that handle graffiti in the city. You have Parks and Rec Centers, yeah, Parks and Rec handles graffiti and Parks and Rec Centers. Private property is handled by code enforcement. Public schools, 311 coordinates with the public schools to handle their graffiti. Graffiti on road bridge or sign is handled by Public Works Operations. So there's quite a few groups that handle graffiti, so we have different categories for each one. So we're going to take, we're going to go ahead and create a graffiti for...
...American School.
You want to choose a, do one for school? We can do that. So we choose school, then we have different questions based on what category you choose. And these questions are defined by the departments who actually own that category. So 311 is actually the group that has defined these questions, and right now, it only has one. What is the graffiti on? So this is just a free-form text, but let's hop out and actually change the category to graffiti on private property. So with this one, we provide not only questions, but also kind of a text-based, you know, where, you know, some basic information, so someone who's submitting the issue can better, you know, better qualify it. So what is the graffiti on? Let's say this graffiti is on a fence. And we choose done. Done. And now we can go ahead and submit it from here. But let's say we want to attach a picture. So you can hit the picture icon up there, and then you need to pull a picture from your photo library. You can take a picture, take a video, all kinds of stuff. But we're going to take a new picture. This is Dave's graffiti. So we have the picture taken. We select to use that picture. Hold on one second, looks like we're... The picture, I think the picture scared the phone.
Dave's graffiti messed up this.
Come on, come on, don't die on me.
Forty-five minutes to get it up and running.
All right, from there, you can submit the picture. Don't you love live demos?
I mean, as much as she do.
No.
It happens to Bill Gates.
Get your grandson here. We're going to...
Forty-five minutes and she's probably...
It looks like the screen my husband has on a TV at home, because I can't use the remotes. It's so rude.
She moves that picture?
Yeah. It's, well, it's...
Vampire, because you can't take pictures of vampires.
Probably on Facebook.
Hansen to the rescue. But this is...
Okay, we're back. Not sure what happened. So we have Dave's picture in there, and then we can go ahead and submit it.
Can we do that again?
No, we won't take a picture during a demo again. We can submit it, and it goes, from there, it'll go to the VB Works backend, and then out to the department that actually handles this. So this would go to Neighborhoods, or Housing's Code Enforcement Group. We're not going to submit this, because this is live, and I don't want to create more work for them. So one of the other things that you can do in here is you can take a look at what issues have been reported around you. So, yeah, you can see everything that's kind of been reported. You need to look at it on a list view, or there's a map here.
Wow, look at that.
So you can see where the issues are. You can pan around on the map, and it'll load more issues. You can select an issue and get some more info. So let's say the streetlight, I'm interested in it. So this one, it looks like a citizen reported that a streetlight was out. You can see that this issue's already been closed, so this was submitted on the 19th of January, and based on the comments, it was closed an hour ago. So this one has, the streetlights are actually handled by Dominion Enterprise, or Dominion Power. So what happens is Public Works Ops actually takes the issue and then enters it into Dominion system for them to take care of it. And if, let's say this was an issue that was, that you were interested in, you can choose to follow that issue, and then you'll receive email updates as the city adds stuff or as other citizens add comments. So that's just kind of a quick overview of what VB Works is. Hopping back over to our presentation. So VB, both VB Works and VB Connect are officially launching tomorrow. Right now, you can go out to the App Store and download either app. We welcome any feedback on these apps, because we see these as kind of living applications. We're expecting to add additional features, you know, as requests come in. Of course, we'll be making, if there's any bugs in the apps, we'll be making bug changes as we go, but we're definitely looking to expand what this application does. All right. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, first of all, it's a great presentation, and we do have questions. Bobby Dyer.
Thank you. I thought it was an outstanding presentation, and I am, trust me, I am not anywhere tech at all, and this is just downright impressive. One of the things we're doing on our, you know, the Process Improvement has a committee going on small business, you know, barriers to startup and expansion. And what we're really trying to do is make Virginia Beach the most user-friendly in terms of starting a business, in terms of, you know, just ease and everything. I could see an application where somebody can come to this, and hopefully, we're going to provide a map where somebody can ease into things, especially with the permit process and all the other regulatory things that we can do. Maybe even applications for tracking, you know, construction starts and DSC, and, you know, the permits inspections, you know, seems to be a problem with some businesses with the communication. This may be the perfect bridge, you know, to fix some of these problems. So I'd definitely like to talk to you, maybe invite you to our, maybe next meeting to come, and, you know, because we're getting ready to put a questionnaire out online to gather some information, but I think in terms of fixing some of the problems that are out there, this may ease and really help us out and put us at the forefront.
Thank you.
Bob, that's what that Acela, Phase 2, the Acela system connection, that's exactly the kind of stuff that that will do.
I think it would be perfect, Jim. Jim Wood.
So I was noticing that you had that breakdown, which was very interesting, that showed that BlackBerry only has 2.5% of the market.
Yes, sir.
That was kind of the original smartphone. So there's no plan to roll these out for those, for Microsoft and BlackBerry, just because they've got like 5%?
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, a lot of the smaller players, it's kind of hard for us to target them when we don't know where they're going to be going. And BlackBerry, if you look at their overall market share, it's been on a decline. Take a look at Windows Phone, it's been up and down, so it's hard to say where those are going to go and how viable they'll be in a year or two.
Other questions? John?
Thought not for... But this would be excellent for council agenda items and people to just send comments and post to a blog who aren't going to come down here but want to share their thoughts, and they're not at a computer and a phone, like, I'm in favor of this, I'm not, here's a question I have. I could see the, this is what people, more and more people use. And not, as you probably know, even corporate websites are weighed out, and they have moved to mobile applications, because people are just not sitting, and I think for the first time about sometime last year, actual mobile contacts of the internet exceeded fixed station PCs, if I remember correctly. So I think there's a lot, and I applaud you up here, I think this is excellent.
Shane?
Is this something that, Jim, maybe you can answer this? We would want to, a citizen asked me the other day about the public notices that we put in the paper in the Beacon that they're not always reading. Is this a place that we could possibly post those public notices so that the citizens can get them a little more readily?
So we do a couple of things. I'm not sure about the public notices, but for getting information out to citizens, we have a couple of options. So one of the things that you see in VB Connect is we have the photo slider down at the bottom. During an emergency, we actually take that slider away and replace it with alerts. So it'll take, from there, you can tap on it and actually get more information about, you know, what alerts are going on. you know, what alerts are going on. We also have support for push notifications, so if there's some, you know, breaking information we need to get out to citizens, we can push it out through this application. But we're always looking to expand, like I said, the feature set here.
Any other questions or comments? Very good, and I, I think our citizens are gonna benefit tremendously, as well as the employees through this process. I'm gonna switch gears on you, because John and I were just talking a little bit about something. Cybersecurity in the private sector is the biggest thing on someone's mind right now. Liability-wise, more the, the big, the big, big reason. Do we have an outside vendor that helps us there? What, what are we doing?
Sure. We have an information security office, it currently contains three members, but we are instituting a new security incident event management program. So, you know, we constantly are looking at our security devices to make sure that the software's updated, that we're constantly getting alerts from those devices, and taking remediate, remediation activities right away if it notices those things. So we are trying to internally put together a comprehensive program. We'll also be starting a, a routine, regular security posture assessment. We do that internally, but I think that what's in the Master Technology Plan, that we would bring in an outside company that would routinely do some passive penetration testing and, and take a look at what we're talking about.
John?
Your point, as you probably know, most Board of Directors of companies now have the, one of the direct reports is their cybersecurity person, and it is something on the Freedom Information Act that qualifies for executive session briefings. And I think it would be appropriate, before we go into the budget cycle, Mr. Mayor, right on point, to get a briefing as to, so that we're knowledgeable with the text of just what our approach is, and what our vulnerabilities are, and what other resource gap is, because, you know, we have accounts, we, you know, everyone's a potential victim.
And, and that's usually like a chief security officer or something that would report to the CIA.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate your presentation.
Thanks for your time today.
It's great. Glad to have you. City Council comments, please. Yes, sir.
Two, I noticed that, I think it was yesterday, Eric Holder made an announcement about a change in policy on confiscation of assets. And I don't know to what extent that affects our police department, but just for curiosity, I have this, I'd like some feedback on, on that. I know we had mentioned about a follow-up, Mr. Mayor, back on the five-year forecast, maybe we could talk about that after the retreat. But I did my own mental math, my own little sheet math, I'm sure it's not correct, but when I added up all the real estate equivalent of all the unfunded liabilities, and not including the pension one, which is nine cents by itself, it's a substantial list of things to cover all the unfunded items that I mentioned, and I think that, that the staff might, they might, they might be a little bit more precise, and I'm happy to share mine with you, Mr. Mayor, but I've done one, but I'm sure it's not as, as accurate, but it's probably, what you call Radcon math close, but it's a, it's a big number. And I think that...
I've got a running tally, and it's something you really don't wanna talk about.
Well, but, but that's all the reason why we do, 'cause it is a big number. But I think that would be appropriate to share in advance of the budget this year. That's all.
Very good. Other comments? Yes, ma'am?
Well, this was quite an exciting weekend. We had so many in town, the Delta, Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, about 1,400 were here at the Virginia Beach Convention, which is good for our city, and I spoke on behalf of you, as well as Mayor Crash Knutsford. We also had an interesting group, the Dream Bowl 2015, of Division II and Division III football hopefuls, athletes, and had about 84-plus parents and so forth. And I even mentioned about the possible to do with the arena, and I'm already getting notes back from these young people saying, "Best job opportunity." Some from Texas, some from California, so that went very well, and that's something I hope we continue, and I thank Shannon for letting me know about that. Really had a good time. And the last thing, I saw you over at the Martin Luther King Urban League, and that was well-attended, and...
I can't believe the governor was in the hospital after that.
Yes, I was surprised the governor was in the hospital after.
I mean, he had, he was strong as an ox, I mean, he was just full of enthusiasm and boom, I mean, I could see in the hospital.
Yeah, it could have been the plane ride or something that, you know, started that problem. And the last thing we saw, too, was the Interdenominational Ministers Conference, attended that, I saw Bobby Dyer there, and Dr. Bright, Linda Bright, also was one of the honorees. So it was quite an exciting weekend, felt to share.
Other comments?
And along that way, Deputy Chief John Bell also got recognition, along with Linda Bright for their contributions to the community.
Very good. Other comments, Shane?
I'll comment as well, then. And thank you, Amelia, for, for speaking at the, at the Dream Bowl banquet. I went out and tossed a coin at the, at the game on Monday, and all I could hear was how wonderful Dr. Ross Hammond was in speaking with everyone there, so they were giving you accolades from, from the loudspeaker, as well as from the field, so thank you for doing that. And Jim and I went Saturday night to the Plaza Rescue Squad's installation banquet and award ceremony, and, and they were quite the energetic group, and, and very, very glad to be doing what they're doing, and they're doing great things, so, and they're anxious for the new, the new station to open.
Yep. That'd be great. Other comments? Okay, here ain't none, we'll go to the agenda there, my good friend, Mr. Vice Mayor.
All right. Under ordinances and resolutions, anybody have any comments on any of them?
On number four, will be abstaining. I've been told I can vote, but I will abstain.
On number two, I'd like to divide the question into declaring the property excess, which I support, and conveying the property to the Development Authority, which I do not. Have to combine, just wanna divide the question now with yes and no.
So it'll be yes for...
So you're voting yes?
Clear access.
And then no to convey.
Correct.
I got it.
I'm, I'm voting no on number four.
I'm voting no on four.
Yeah, if I could make a comment on number four, I'd just like to, you know, maybe bring a thought forward for consideration. You know, it's without question that conflict of interest is gonna be a major topic at the General Assembly right now, and I, I just think that it might be prudent if we waited until the results of the General Assembly came back, you know, to give us a clearer picture about, you know, the temperature, that, you know, and what's going on factually. And the, the other thing is, too, I think we should also afford the city treasurer an opportunity, you know, later on down the line, because I'm sure we're gonna be talking about conflict of interest, you know, this is a hot topic in the Commonwealth right now, and I think that we should give the courtesy that, you know, John, when John comes before us at the budget meeting or anything, that he be at least allowed to comment since the resolution. So I'm not willing to go forward at, at this point.
All right. So I know what I'm doing. Who's gonna vote for it, and who's gonna vote against?
Might not have a second, but I'm gonna address it. That's the key.
We'll just pull it off then. All right. Okay.
Shane?
Shannon?
On number two, I'm gonna vote along with John on that one, in that I heard from some constituents, they're a little concerned about the traffic flow and the daily trips on that road, so I'm okay with declaring it excess, but I would like some more information before we do any development there.
On number two?
Yes, sir.
So you're gonna vote no, or you're gonna vote, what, what are you gonna do? Tell me.
I'm okay in declaring it excess, but before I say, I wanna sell it to Development Authority, I wanna make sure we know what we're doing there, and look at the traffic that some of the citizens brought up to me.
Or excess. Why don't we defer this, so we can separate it and vote on it at the next meeting?
Yeah, I don't see there's any rush on this at all, do you, Jim?
No, no, sir.
Oh, you're fine.
Yeah, we'll just divide, it'd be much easier.
All right, let's, let's, let's defer it until the next formal meeting.
Next normal meeting, or they all normal?
I don't know. All right, everybody's okay with one, right? We're gonna defer two. Yes. Okay, then we'll have to pull it then. All right, item three, everybody okay with item three?
Incensus.
All right. Pull number four. How about five? Everybody okay with five?
Right.
Okay. Six, everybody okay with that?
Right.
All right, under planning. MCQ Builders LLC and BH Fine Land LLC, Princess Anne, Ms. Henley?
Well, I see it's here for indefinite deferral, it looks like a no-starter to me, so...
That's a pretty strong signal.
So you're okay for indefinite deferral?
For indefinite deferral, yeah.
At least you'd be polite.
Okay. Item two, Steve Barnes and Mary Sue and James S. Riggs. That's Princess Anne also, right there.
This can, can go on consent, but I noticed the material said that there was no opposition, but I understand there was a speaker. And when I found that there was a speaker, I called him to see if he planned to speak today, and he said he didn't, because he didn't feel that it was productive, and so he wasn't coming down. But I do think his opposition should at least be noted, rather than to say that there was no opposition. This, of course, is an extension of an existing building, so I think from the variance standpoint, it does meet the criteria that we could allow the, the variance in the flood plain, but I think it's important that it actually go on the plat, that this is not a residential site and can only be used for agriculture. I think it's a condition, but I think it really needs to go on the plat for future...
Y'all got that covered? Okay, thank you.
Item three, Dominion Virginia Power, Prince Sam District, Ms. Henley?
Uh, yes, that's...
I'll be abstaining. Have a letter.
I'm gonna abstain, I don't know that I have to, but it's right next to some property I own, so I'm gonna abstain on it, too. Item four, Kenneth Leach and Timothy White, Princess Anne, Ms. Henley?
Yeah, I was at the Sandbridge Civic League meeting last night when they voted to be okay with it, and if Sandbridge is okay with it, I sure am.
Item five, obedient Paws LLC and Adam and Diane Blackston. Apparently the neighbors are all in accord with, but it's a good thing and so forth, so I'm okay with it. Item six, beach lawn and garden, George Leach, conditional use permit, bulk storage. I haven't heard any objections, and I don't see anything wrong with it, really. Item seven, Newtown Square Associates and Providence Development, Kempsville, Amelia?
Yeah, I'm okay with it, and they have met and talked with all those who are concerned.
This is also the one that we were gonna come back with, something about the site plan, right? Okay, will we have that?
We've got a letter from the applicant's attorney addressing issues that came...
Okay.
Item eight, Checkered Flag Motor Car Company, Inc., Julia H. Lawrence Trust, A and B.
Abstaining.
The mayor's abstaining. I don't really have any problem with it, I think probably a good application for that property there, and I haven't heard any objections from anybody. Item nine, AH Sandbridge LLC, Princess Anne, Ms. Henley?
Yes, as they have changed their application, so the only use that was excluded that is now going to be allowed is massage therapy, and childcare center will still be an excluded use.
All right. Item ten, City of Virginia Beach. Anybody have any problems with that?
I do have a question about B. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about us...
B or D?
A, B. Uh, the, the lot coverage for 10B, right?
I was too, but it has to come back to us, that's why I'm supporting. It's not a stat. Yeah, it comes back, has to come back to us, and that's the only reason why I'm voting for it, otherwise I would not.
Well, if it, because I'm, I'm really concerned with the impact it might have on the stormwater, and so I'm not sure why we would not be making certain that the allowable lot coverage is in compliance with the comp plan recommendations.
Well, if I remember right, and I don't wanna steal anyone's thunder when they came back, this was about what we're trying to do redevelopment, and the people might just stay as it is, but redevelopment with a different coverage would be preferred to leave it like it is, and there might be some trade space there that would make that work, but it does have to come back to us to say yes.
Are you okay? Okay.
And then I have some comments that I see as well, the...
Excuse me?
C, the transition area design guidelines, and I, I really appreciate the planning commission considering this and sending their, their comments, and I appreciate the fact that they very obviously spent time looking at this and reviewing it, and I notice in their errata sheets, they made several recommended edits and a few changes, and I think I'm okay with most of them, except the ones that change the calculation of density and open space to be based on gross acreage rather than developable. And if we could go back to the original on those, then it's okay for me to be on the consent agenda with this, if that, if this would suit you all all right. The, the developable is the way it was in 2003, it's the way it's been administered all these years, it's what the, the committee first recommended, and this...
Does anyone object to that?
This change to gross acreage.
Could we defer it and see what we're gonna be voting? Yeah, I don't, I tend to disagree with what Barbara just said, but it would be nice to be able to read what she's saying we're doing, so we had a chance to look at beforehand.
You wanna defer just C?
Yeah.
Is that it?
Sounds like more.
Defer the, you mean to another, okay, then if, if you're not ready to vote on it tonight...
You break it down, how you want it?
I'd just like to see exactly what you're putting across.
Okay, I would just, just have it go back to the original language, rather than the way that it was changed in the errata.
Well, Barbara, within that, does it, does it define in there what developable means the definition is?
Well, it would go back to what has, what it has always been, and that's what worries me, is we don't really have a clear understanding of what gross is either. Gross means everything, as far as I know, and I know that, that we, it goes back to Section 200, and the committee spent a lot of time talking about the problems with this, and I think this is an issue that maybe does need to be looked at with the total comp plan, because this affects, if we were to change that definition, it would, it would, could affect the whole city, but, you know, I don't really think we want to change it just in the transition area. This has not been presented to the public, it's not accepted in the comp, the planning commission.
Do you need an answer on this, Jim, right now, next week or...
No, there's...
Okay, let's break it up then, Barbara, then we can get more clarification, and maybe have a presentation.
Well, I, I just really am concerned at, at that change, and I would hate for it to kinda get in, because the public was never allowed, I mean, that was never presented to the public, and all of a sudden it's...
So we're gonna defer just item C?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And item 11, resolution race Simon acquisition to LLC.
Yes, you.
This basically extends the time period for them to...
More trouble.
For the staff to come back with its recommendation, which is fine with me.
All right.
Well, if we're gonna defer it, then another issue that I was gonna accept, if we were gonna prove it today, but if we're gonna defer it anyway, they changed some of the language on infrastructure, and they wanted to kinda soften it, but I'm really concerned, and we saw that with West Neck, if, if the infrastructure is not adequate, then, you know, I've got some concerns. So I will also, since we're gonna be revisiting it, I would also like to revisit those proposed changes.
If y'all could reach out to Mrs. Henley on this, and then let's make a comparison in what you can recommend and not recommend, then we'll take it from there, okay? Sounds good. Okay, dokey, folks. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A, code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes: publicly held property, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, or of a disposition of publicly held property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A3, Bay Side District, Beach District, Pembroke Beach District's development projects. Personnel matters... personnel matters, discussion, consideration of, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Drive a motion.
The move.
Do I have a second? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Danforth?
Aye.
Aye.
You doing the Luisa Lisa? You're going to be second, right after Andy. Okay.
Say here.
Yeah, I guess we're going into it.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Aye.
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 Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mary Jackson.
Aye. We're going to take five-minute recess. I just have it.